And call the meeting to order and start with pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains my nation under God in the best will with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries next is approval of minutes of one, three, twenty-three.
Lance, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that presented for January third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries next is approval of claims for payment of one, nine, twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries now I have Midland Power Cooperative Economic Development Project.
Do you mind if I make a quick statement Lance?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, last summer, I think it was last summer, I uh got to meet JP Barrett um at a meeting locally and since then, uh I've been kind of the conduit between JP and Norm and uh now the Devs onboard, she's also stepped in and uh they've got a project that they're putting for planning and zoning board. And uh I thought it would be a good opportunity for JP and Norm and their team to present to us um as to what uh being proposed and the impacts and implications, so that's the reason and I appreciate you Lance, let me uh get these guys in front of us today.
Who do they want for this folks?
Uh, Norm, do you wanna introduce the project, use the podium if you would, thanks.
Norm Vandal at Midland Power Cooperative, I should probably determine that I'm retired from Midland Power Cooperative and hired back as a consultant, so I guess my real title is a consultant, but Andy Greger's here uh also representing the Midland Power Cooperative, he's my replacement. So we're we're kind of taping along here for another few more months. Uh, so yeah. BJ kind of uh reached out and we've been kind of tracking JP as far as uh looking for different sites across Iowa. So Midland's in seventeen different counties, we also manage a Harlan uh initiative on our EC in Harlan, so we've been kind of uh looking for different sites. Uh JP's teams looking at anything from a five megawatt to a twenty megawatt load centers. And we're finding that uh some of our substations fit the five to six megawatt loads and we can have very little infrastructure upgrades for substations and accommodate, he can fit on about one acre site. So these are server farms, so a lot of people get them mixed up a little bit that they're Bitcoin. So uh cryptocurrency is is kind of a mining process that the server farmers do rent out or do the business for them. But A U R is not really the Bitcoin or cyber security and cybercoin facilities, but they are just a tool to help manage that and basically do data mining. So we're looking at uh three different sites here in Harden County. Two of them uh we've moved forward with, we have updated one of the substations to meet the the load that uh they're requiring. We're working on uh site number two and last Monday we did uh have a meeting with the uh planning and zoning board and they're going through, had a lot of great uh questions through that, I think there's a lot of education that needs to happen as far as who they are, what they're trying to accomplish and knowing that we had site number two coming up with P and Z, they did not make any kind of uh comments or motions to approve or disapprove, but wanted to table it until their next meeting on January twenty-fourth. So we do have stack site number two coming up that the P and Z's uh taking a look at or uh I think they're rezoned, I think there's other options that you can look at as well and I've kind of talked to Dev a little bit and I go but Dev speak on that because I'm not a hundred percent sure where where Harden County is with that option of that process, so. You entertain any questions or if there's anything they missed that you want me to kind of speak on behalf of or role to do that.
And I know JP provided a presentation that he's gonna present to us uh to give us an overview of what the project is and is. But no, I think that was a good sum up, thanks.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
JP?
Get the presentation up, my name is John Paul Derrick. And I'll be presenting for A U R farm. If we can maybe get it to one slide per screener. The plus button might be able to. Yeah, we'll leave that. Okay, so I'm gonna, it's a lot of slides in this, I'm gonna go through pretty fast and try to get the main key points. I started mining store back in twenty sixteen in my parents' basement back in North Carolina um with the intention of building out data centers uh maximizing and using blockchain technology to make income. Click next. Uh so we're a US-based company, um we launched our first mobile container deployment in two thousand eighteen uh at Intemecula, California, at a wildlife area uh where a solar farm was being built in an economic or in a area that was protected. Um in today we have fifteen megawatts running and over three thousand five hundred new generation Bitcoin miners for our clients um and seventy different investors and by the end of twenty twenty, we will, our our goal is to deploy additional fifteen megawatts, we were end up able to deploy another ten um last year and we're excited to continue to grow in Iowa uh this year. So what do we provide? We provide these five services to our clients, a turnkey solution, innovative deal structure, experienced agile team, low-cost power options and scalable infrastructure. Our our biggest, or how we approach this is five megawatt facilities at substations that don't require as much upgrades or any upgrades in order to have modularity and be able to get up and running relatively quickly. Uh here's some case studies and different projects that we've worked on over the years. Uh we work with the Sacramento Kings in a program called Mining for Good where we deployed and donated uh equipment to run in their data center at their facility and uh those profits and proceeds um are donated to uh Girls Who Code and uh another coalition of a charity that um was fully supported by Sacramento Kings was the first engaging to ever mine cryptocurrency. This is a data center that they deployed it in at their facility underneath the N D A stadium. Uh number three is the BioStar Project in Temecula uh with BioStar Renewables, it operates a solar farm in California. They asked us to deploy this before the end of the year and we're able to get that done to help them achieve some tax credits and this was back in twenty eighteen. And then this was the first container that was ever developed, uh right off the lot, wasn't even fully done yet and uh we were able to deploy at that solar farm. This is an example facility to give you an idea of what type of facilities look like today or facilities will look like in the future. This is our site in Saint Anthony, Iowa. Um we have two strings of pods where we deploy the servers and then two transformers are provided by us. Um along along with the concrete and the rest of groundwork, Jared Goldrey on our team uh helps deploy those and does electrical for all of that. This was about a one acre plot of land at another site that we're building out, um this is kind of the amount of space that we need to deploy five megawatts of our facility and as you can see we're right below the substation, so we try to put it right next to substation, reduce any impacts and underground cost for Boston the community. This is uh one of our site maps that we provide um when we design a site. And uh this is a presentation I'm gonna walk through about the energy usage and kind of how the energy plays with the grid and how we can act as something called a demand response resource. So what if electric utilities could upgrade infrastructure without any capex or cost to them, increase revenue, lower rates for their members and use more renewable energy while adding high-tech jobs, that's what we bring uh to the community. So it all, there's some questions to what, where, when, why and how and Bitcoin is uh one of those services that we provide when it comes to data mining. And what some of our clients utilize, you know, mining Bitcoin as their revenue, but it's not the only stream of income that these sites produce. So Bitcoin mining case study, this is by C F U Energy Services, uh they had a public uh presentation they did a couple of months ago and I'll be showing you part of that presentation. So some quick terms to go over, decentralized stands for no central authority governing quantity or means of exchange. Digital asset is a non-physical good that has value, cryptographically secured blockchain ledger, secure public list of all transactions maintained by miners. Miner is computer setup to solve math problems, to validate transactions. A pool is a group of mining companies that work together and split profits. And ASIC stands for application-specific integrated circuit, specifically designed computer that acts like the miner or the server. Proof of work is the transit or uh method to validate transaction and to perform work or to gain consensus or trust on a network. And a hash is a mathematical uh work function, we measure that in tear hashes, so something like the speed of the car or the speed of the servers. So demand-side management, um what and what does a utility have in their uh back pocket to manage demand when it comes to the grid load? They have electrification, account management, uh put up some trees, man response, distributed energy resources, tax exemptions. These are all different things at the utility's disposal to manage their load base and ensure that they can manage their costs when it comes to acquiring power for their customers. So there's three really considerations here, physics, human behavior, economics for utilities and you want something that's actionable, practical and also possible. So there's a lot of things that's possible, like batteries and electric cars, what's practical is a whole different story and what's actually actionable today is uh what we're presenting, which is uh demand response with cryptocurrency and server picking lines. And so we're gonna get into uh demand response right now and we'll show you the graph. So this is the typical uh utility load profile. You can see that you have some curtailed wind, wind that's able to be used, uh the load is the blue and so when there is no um wind and the load needs more power, they have a peaker plant, which or C F U is a coal plant, they turn on in order to meet demand. They can see in the morning and evening, no one's really using that wind, so it's curtailed and it doesn't go to any customer. So if you had a battery, that's what it's gonna look like to your system, we'll get a couple hours of extra load where you're able to use some of that wind that it's not used before on the beginning and the end. But if you had curtailed load, which is demand response, which is what we're looking to bring significant increase of that wind now is being used, the wind was going, wasted and you can see that there's no uh mining load or server load in gray area because we're uh turned off, so contractually we turn off our power during set times, either in the summer, it's anywhere between seven AM all the way to like eight PM or ten PM and the winter has early morning time or in a late evening time when we'll have to turn off our facilities. So what happens when you add that curtailed load, you can see that you're able to change how that peak is uh is 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 made and matched by the utility, so they don't have to turn on a smaller portion of that peaker plant or that coal plant to meet the consumers' demand across their grid because we're able to allow them to purchase energy on the grid for when we're running in the morning and the evenings or use that wind that they might not have been able to acquire at a discount or even have the uh response or the demand, sorry, the production of energy to meet uh the demand of the consumers, so that kind of flattens the line, it's all about finding the curve. Power usage of communities is pretty volatile, shoots up in the morning, comes down in the afternoon and shoots up again in the evening depending on the season. And this is just uh I'm adding another peaker plant showing how they can meet that demand. And then you can go to the next slide as well. So now we'll get into some basics on Bitcoin mining, that was the energy demand response. So how does it work? Someone requested transaction on the network, the transaction is broadcast or peer-to-peer computers known as nodes. We sit right here running servers to validate the transactions. Once verified, the transactions are called consolidated to a form of datablock or block. Those blocks are added on top of each other, that's what makes a blockchain. And then the transaction is verified, we get paid or the clients get paid six point two five Bitcoins per transaction fee and we're providing them uh a service above the energy costs on a monthly basis and that's how uh we earn our income to pay the infrastructure that we have to put up. So Bitcoin mining is here to stay, it's gonna be over the next hundred and twenty years, so this isn't something that's going away uh next week or next month. Um it started January third, two thousand nine and it's gets um harder, there's less Bitcoins every four years. This plays into the price dynamics, you know, a lot of people talk about Bitcoin very volatile, uh this is part of the reason why, it's because when you cut the supply of the Bitcoins in half, it affects the demand side and that's why Bitcoin becomes more valuable. So these are some of our first facilities, as I mentioned modular infrastructure, deploying onsite next to power generation. Uh this is one of the first facilities we deployed running, the first container that came off and uh using Dave's crane and dropping it off. So what are operational factors? We have cost of power generation, our in-house electricians and um technicians. Speed of deploy is really informed us and then the margin on hash rate and what the price of hash rate. What external factors do we not have control of? The hardware cost and its efficiency and then also how much is made by our customers through the revenue per terror hatcher, how much each server is making. So this was uh back in twenty nineteen, miners got paid five point billion dollars annually. In twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, the Bitcoin price rose, miners hit about eighteen to nineteen billion dollars annually. Uh this is something that's spread across every cryptocurrency miner in the world and it's unfortunately shared based on the amount of hash rate that you have on the network. So um this is kind of how the price in uh mining property reacted in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, as you can see it's relatively stable with some um bumps when it when the profit increases and then you can see on the the little B T C sign there in April twenty twenty, that's when it happened. That's when the difficulty for the the new Bitcoins that came out that found out and we have a drop in profitability. This is a electrical diagram for one of our uh server farms, so we have stamp electrical diagrams, uh work with certified Iowa electricians and uh we get inspected by the same inspector uh for to turn on or energize any of our equipment. This is a switchgear documentation of uh the breakers that control the um control the servers and the energy that goes to servers and allow us to turn on in case of emergency, also access the fire department or the law enforcement to turn off in case of emergency without any of our tech tech or staff being on site um that's outside of the servers, so it's accessible um from from the outside without a key. This is our transformers that we use, they're two point five megawatt transformers um from a company called Maddox and uh US-based, I mean the UL requirements and you know up to US code, electrical code. So who are miners? We're fast-moving, the high-risk tolerance, we have lots of capital to deploy uh in in these facilities, they're it's pretty expensive when we add these servers, our team focuses on building out the infrastructure, like I said, with our clients and customers, boot on the servers, we take a margin there on operating it for them, similar to a normal data center like Facebook running uh cloud operations for their clients. So they're everywhere, they might already be on the system and their preferred location is access to large amounts of power with a low energy cost. And with capital positive, we're highly scalable and uh we have fast ROI on our investments that we're making in these areas, which allow us to recruit and invest in one site and put it into a future site, reinvest our capital into new deployments. So why are utilities, again, large loads, low cost to serve for one customer, one bill, one invoice. Uh we increase the revenue, we reduce the cost of service for all customers. We pay for the infrastructure improvements upfront and increase opportunity for renewable generation penetration in the area. Iowa is one of the states with highest renewable penetration and we act as a potential heat source along with community growth, high-tech town. Kind of higher tech locally, but if we're unable to meet that demand, well, how to tech come here, live onsite and live in company housing uh in one of the local towns. Risks that come up, customers disappear overnight, that's something that you can see as you look up and Bitcoin mining uh simply because it's an energy game, so someone has a high energy cost, let's say eight cents, seven cents. They're not gonna be able to be profitable during a bear market when the prices are lower, that's why we work with people like Midland Power who have a lower cost of energy and tariff rates that allow us to be competitive when other customers or other mining groups are not. Um, move faster for other customer growth, so by us taking that substation up, it is gonna admit the amount of new uh load connected to that substation, while we try to treat rural areas. And if lose money, interconnection rates not structured carefully, so if the utility is unfamiliar with how to structure the rate class, it's it's hard for them, they can lose, they can lose money. Um, we use a lot of power and one mistake, you know, two percent of the state could be a larger state and very little tax revenue, especially in Iowa, we do the data center tax credits that are provided. Um, but there's still tax revenue when it comes to the job creation and uh and other types of types of taxes that we have to pay. So these are just some some more recap of the best practices, we locate right next to the substation, harnessing infrastructure costs paid by us. We sometimes have to provide a short bond or a deposit, uh demand response, D R one or D R two, different programs we participate in, that's when we're turning off. So for example, during Christmas and before that this year, we turned off our facilities for about two days almost uh to provide power back to the communities so that uh the grid did not have to go on and procure power at a higher cost, which was close to four hundred to five hundred dollars a megawatt hour, I mean not even higher during the past uh last year. We come in, tend to come in five megawatt starter packs, we use a voltage called four fifteen and anything above twenty megawatts tends to be a building. So this is the crypto mining growth in Secret Falls for first twelve months, so October twenty-first, there was zero kilowatts usage. By September twenty-second, there was eleven thousand five hundred kilowatts combined, so it's a eleven megawatts, thousand one ratio for kilowatt to megawatt conversion, so about eleven megawatts or two of these sites uh were built, as you can see, they ramp up pretty quick once they uh get through any type of zoning and build cross-docks and engineering and we're able to have load relatively quickly. So this is one last, for example, the you can see hour by hour, this is the demand of a site and when you get that notification, we're shutting off ninety-seven percent of our energy to provide that back to the community, we have a thirty minute or faster response time. Um this, as I mentioned, helps with the power for members of the company. So fifteen percent load reduction uh for C F U on their whole load base and that allows them to meet that demand with renewable energy and other types of energy sources, not have to increase their their coal plant usage. So this was the twenty twenty-one theory that they had before they uh put on load and this is the reality of what it looked like. So this is the amount of uh servers coming into the space and you can see it's grows exponentially larger on as time goes on and it's a worldwide thing, so happening all over the world, um it's one of those uh incentive system with finding lowest cost energy and uh creating sound and secure money. Uh the servers also get better over time, so about every two or three years, we'll upgrade our servers, bring new ones in. Move uh old ones to other sites that have stranded energy that would be on natural gas wells that are flaring uh wind farms that are distressed or stranded, solar farms that don't have access to the grid, things like that. So and then the footprint, super important, when you have a gold mine in your backyard, it looks something like that where Bitcoin mine, that Bitcoin mine right there Winston US is close to uh a thousand megawatts now, I believe, so that would be like two hundred times bigger than what we're looking to build today, so these sites get big, uh especially with communities that have really low power rates and electrical construction. Uh so you can see that the footprint is very, very small, that's actually, this facility is in Texas, the bottom river is an alcohol plant that would bankrupt and uh you know coastal, the plants move their production overseas. So Bitcoin miners are energizing these areas and bringing in, I believe, over three hundred jobs to this uh city or this town in uh in Texas. So thank you for your time today and if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Made jobs. So this site, each several uh two jobs, full-time, on staff, living in uh in potentially in Harding County or Marshall County and then one person who will be on both sites, so about five employees for the two sites that we're discussing. And that's just Iowa jobs, including in this overhead staff that will be hired on.
What are the site requirements, what are you looking for in a site?
Sure, so we look for a substation that has open base or open capacity with the substation transformer uh being available for five megawatts of load minimum.
Like how, what what's the distance for a substation that's that's?
For us, every foot is gonna be, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty dollars, something around those ranges to draw the wires, so we try to be as close as possible, but we're doing a even a quarter of a mile, it's gonna be an additional hundred thousand dollars uh in wire, not more, to get it to run wire.
Dave, address for and up. Sorry.
Well, and and I wondered also, is the data, the data line significant as far as what what's provided as far as?
So we use a wind stream to do the connection, which is over radio waves, uh similar to other internet connections here, and we have Starlink as backup in case the fiber network goes down in this area.
And it's part of acreage.
Acreage, one acre plot of land will really suffice for five megawatt.
And I'm just thinking, you know, I'm on Buckeye City, we've got that big lot out there, but I don't know if there's a substation also.
Uh JP, can you uh address what the average pay is for employee?
Sure, average pay is close to twenty-eight dollars an hour and that does not include benefits. All right, so there is health benefits at the company and bonuses for uptime, uh and that's starting to pay twenty-four, twenty-five, that averages twenty, twenty.
Thank you.
Yep, and most employees are salaried, so we really trust them and we need them to run these sites because there are penalties if we don't turn off when the energy is running, you have to pay the same price as everyone when it's uh when everyone else wants it. So we don't get a special treatment when that happens and if that does happen, we have a much larger electricity bill than we expected and uh that's why the technicians are crucial to our operations.
Excellent.
BJ, on credit, we were able to, Renee and I were able to visit the senior at any site, we actually did a site visit, so we were very impressed and thankful for the tour that they um we gained a lot of knowledge about the the industry because it wasn't unknown, you know, I've been in that, so but we had a great tour, we were able to talk to the employees that were on site that day. Um we did a full tour of the server area and and the whole acreage site there as far as.
It's intriguing, I and uh JP took me out to this Wellsburg site over the summer and um I was just in awe and so and the the employees there were uh very knowledgeable, very happy to be there, loved living in the area. Uh some of them weren't from the area originally, but really embraced rural Iowa and uh some were planning on moving their families to to the area, so that's really great to see too.
Yeah, we love to provide jobs to, you know, young men and where ages twenty-one and up that are coming here and looking for some high tax and fun or the fast-paced environment where they can really take ownership and grow in leadership roles, so it's important to me uh that we can provide that to more young men across the world, given that opportunity.
And they also mentioned that um the community college was providing some of the same training opportunities.
That's correct, yeah, we worked with one of the community colleges to uh get some tax dollars to help with training uh up to six employees uh for this area, this region.
And do we have a map from Midland of where the acceptable substation is?
Is that okay, Norman or Andy on that, they can.
There are two substations, one that'd be El Dorado, the other one's Union Substation, so.
So it's likely to be located close to one of those.
Yeah, we're we're right next to it and ideally we're, we're, we have a pipeline of sites uh going through different processes across all of Iowa. These, we're looking to put these two forward and we have uh customers that are actively looking for space, so we'll be able to fill hold of that in a timely manner and bringing up those new employees that will, you know, mid, mid-year. I'm gonna have you address Matt for the meeting, what more questions?
Okay.
Any other public comments?
No, I, thanks for coming in today and this is a very educational presentation JP and Andy and Norm and.
Appreciate it.
Example. Do you wanna stick around?
Yeah.
And uh that'd be great, thank you.
Can can we find out who Mike is on this Zoom?
He's the, I'll wear a newspaper for gentlemen.
Oh, all right.
All right, moving, thank you. Moving next is we have an amendment to the twenty twenty-three holidays, we had January second for a holiday for twenty fourth, January first.
Correct.
Okay.
I make a motion to amend the holidays to January first, twenty twenty-four instead of January second.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most curious. Next, we have a consideration approved DOT federal aid agreement, one twenty-two HBP zero three seven Harden. Or, excuse me, city bridge funding where city of Iowa Falls, so. Avenue over the Our River Taylor, wanna talk about that?
Sure, so this is essentially the same agreement we've done for the Alden Bridge and the Owasson Bridge. You know, they just changed the name and all the numbers. The big thing is that now they have raised it to one point five million dollars. That the, they will cover, so to be honored, you know, in point five million before we have to start kicking an inning. And then we'll do an agreement with that, it'll also go fifty fifty on it.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the agreement with. With the city of Iowa Falls.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
It's actually the agreement.
For the Outfalls Bridge.
Yeah, all right.
Any other discussion? Are you no more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most curious. Next, I have this consideration, prove IT department credit card limit increase, I believe that was to raise up to about five thousand somewhere around there.
I make a motion to approve raising the IT department's credit card limit to five thousand dollars.
I would make that, or I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Was currently two.
Two.
Two, and it wasn't carrying enough.
Right.
So. Any other discussion? Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next, we have this consideration of birth treasurer's deputy appointments.
I'd make a motion to approve the treasurer's deputy appointments for the, Jessica Wright. And Sherry. Spymans.
That would be it. Right, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? This happens every time there, a new, either a reelection or a new officer comes in. Any other discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Next, it's consideration, approve recorders deputy appointment.
Motion to approve the recorder's deputy appointment of Cheryl Lawrence.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Most carries. Now I have this change of status.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approving the change of status for a pay increase. Laura Carr, she's the office assistant at the conservation department. The new wage would be fifteen dollars an hour, effective January minute.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Now, it's consideration, approve auditor's monthly report.
I will make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for the month of. February, or February, December.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries. Now I have consideration, approve recorder's monthly report.
I make a motion to approve the recorder's monthly report for the month of December.
I have a second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries, another business.
I, and one thing just to request, incoming weeks, Lance, I know you sit on the recycling board and reading some of the. Information from the recent minutes, could you provide us with an update of how the rural. Our rural constituents are benefited by the, the recycling program and the fiscal standpoint of that in a few weeks?
Okay.
I appreciate that. That's all I have, thanks, Lance.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Any other public comments or other business, excuse me? Dave, did you wanna hit us up on courthouse?
Well, the supervisor's room is. Getting the ceiling grid completed, the electrician's been in there and filled all the lights. They still have to come in and install the cat six cabling, and there's some outlets that's going to be done. He said it'll be back on Wednesday. Once he's done with that, the grid is all up, so the ceiling tiles will have to be placed in. And then the carpenter will be coming in to put in the doors, I think the doors and the desk are all completed as far as. Construction, they just need to be put together, run in and put together. And I'm still waiting to get some information on the bathrooms, what the status is and when they're gonna be getting those final lines.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Any other business? Are you none? I'll just add, I had public comments at the end of it, there was a sign-up sheet at the beginning. For those that are present, if anybody has public comments, I'll still accept it right now, but going forward, I'll have you sign in prior to the meeting, or prior to the beginning of the meeting. Other than that, I can go for public comments. I had two people sign up, I believe that you guys are giving the presentation, did you have any other comments you'd like to make? Okay. From Eric, ask for German or recess.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most curious. We're done, thank you. Do you wanna get those guys up? You got lots of questions.
So, we were talking about building a lot of new containers. I'm honestly, I was.